Hey. All right, so it's 1:01 PM and this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Today, it's August 2nd, 2021. I don't know that. Let's see here. I don't know if we need to make any changes to the agenda. I mean, can you scroll up slightly so we can finish seeing the new business on the agenda and make sure we don't need to make any adjustments? Please, perfect. All right. Is there Commissioner Feeder, do you see any adjustments that needs to be made on the agenda?
I don't think so. Looks good.
Okay. I will entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
All right, second, any further discussion?
None for me.
All right, none for me either. Thank you very much. With that, community informational items, Commissioner Feeder, do you have any community informational items that you'd wish to share at this point?
I don't, as I said, do we need to vote on the agenda then?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
I.
I. Wonderful, thanks. It's been a minute since I've chaired a meeting, so. Um, community informational items, Commissioner Feeder, do you have anything to share today?
I just maybe let folks know, I did attend, there's a redistricting commission that is ongoing for the Colorado redistricting process. This is a sort of nonpartisan commission that was set up, I think, well, I forget the amendment, but it was an amendment to the state constitution forming this commission to try to make it less political. And I attended a hearing in Frisco on Saturday night. And spoke along with Summit Commissioners, Clear Creek Commissioners and members of the public, and just wanted to let people know that, you know, that process is going on and will be for the next couple of months, so it's possible to submit written comments. And I think one issue maybe for community information, the current preliminary map, and it is very preliminary, splits our house district, we're split off from Summit and part of Eagle. And I think just given the regional nature of some of our housing and workforce and transportation issues, keeping our Colorado, so sorry, I didn't say that, that's the Colorado Legislative House District, not the federal US Congressional District, so the state House District, we're currently split off from Summit, as some of Eagle, and I think it would be in our interests to maintain that cohesion, given our kind of regional policy issues that we face. That was it, thanks.
Thank you so much for that information. I do appreciate it. I don't, I guess I do have just a little bit to share today. I would just ask everyone to please be patient with the sudden influx of visitors that we're experiencing into our community. As you know, there's some issues on the I-70 corridor, and so we're we're kind of a gateway to other forms of communication to other areas of the state. And so just be patient, we do have special events taking place as well as trying to accommodate everyone trying to get where they need to be. So just a little bit of patience would go a long way. So with that, are there any commissioner clarifications you'd like to make, Commissioner Feeder?
None for me.
All right. And so with that, we are going to move into, let's see here, into public comments on items not on the agenda. And at this point, if you would like to make a public comment on an item that is not listed on the agenda, if you will please raise your hand or put your name in the chat. We will give you three minutes to make a public comment. And then we will move on from there. Okay. I don't see anyone at this point that would like to make a public comment, so with that, we will move on. First on our agenda today, under new business, we have a public hearing for Fast Stop 1161 Incorporated, transfer of ownership for the fermented malt beverage for the stop and go at 2:30 Mountain View Drive in Leadville, Colorado, 80461. So with that, I will open the public hearing today at 1:06 PM. And I am sitting with our county clerk, Patty Berger, who handles all of our liquor licenses. And so at this time, I will ask her if she has reviewed the application for completeness and if she has any comments in relation to the application.
I have, I have reviewed the application. It appears to be in order. All the fees have been paid. We posted the premises. We added this special hearing in the newspaper, so I think we've done everything to get this process finished.
Okay. Thank you very much, Patty. Commissioner Feeder, do you have any questions for Patty at this time? And I don't believe that the applicant has joined us today.
No, that all seems in order.
All right, wonderful. At 1:07 PM, I'll open the public hearing for public comment. Is there anyone with us today that would like to make a public comment on the public hearing? Patty, did you receive any public, written public comments to read into the record today?
I did not.
Okay. So seeing none, I will close the public hearing at 1:07 PM. And seeing no further questions, I will make a motion that we approve the application for Fast Stop 1161 Incorporated, transfer of ownership for the fermented malt beverage for the stop and go at 2:30 Mountain View Drive in Leadville, Colorado, 80461.
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
None for me.
All right, none for me either. Seeing none, all those in favor, I?
I.
All right. Thank you very much. So with that, we'll move into the rest of our new business. Number two on our agenda today is the renewal of optional premise liquor license for Mount Massive Golf Club. I will ask Patty if she's reviewed the application for this liquor license for completeness and if she has any concerns.
I have reviewed it. It is complete. The fees have been paid, and I have no concerns with renewing this license.
All right, thank you very much, Patty. Commissioner Feeder, do you have any discussion or questions for Patty regarding this liquor license renewal?
I do not.
All right, I don't either. I will make a motion that we approve the renewal of an optional premise liquor license for Mount Massive Golf Club.
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
None for me.
All right, seeing then, all those in favor, I?
I.
All right. Next, we'll move into transit feasibility RFP consultant recommendation. So we received four bids for the local transit feasibility study RFP that we had listed out on our website. And have had an opportunity to review those. The mayor and I met together to review the RFPs for completeness. And to bring to the board a recommendation for the consulting firm that we would like to engage with for the transit feasibility study. After contacting references and discussing the RFPs that we received, both the mayor and I felt it was appropriate to recommend at this time that the board select Fair and Peers for the local transit feasibility study. And hold on just a second here, I'm getting the total cost. And so with that, their total cost of the transit feasibility study is, hold on, I'm getting there in just one second here, $49,970, which will be paid through a 5304 grant with CDOT funding and then an in cut, and then a matching contribution split between the city and the county. So I would like to make a motion that the board accept the recommendation to engage with Fair and Peers for the local transit feasibility study.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
Yeah, maybe, maybe just ask a question. I'm glad you and the mayor are working closely on that and moving this along. Any thoughts on, I guess I'd be interested in what were the kind of top criteria you're looking for?
In the selection of the firm?
Yeah, yeah, like, I mean, I know, instead of looking in different topics, you know, sometimes we select more of a national firms and it's more local because we really need that local context. You know, yeah, just, just a quick reflection as appropriate on what's weighed you and the mayor.
Yeah, absolutely. So this consulting firm has done a lot of national and regional work. And so we, what really stood out for us in their proposal was the local experience that they had with Summit Stage, in particular with the Lake County Link commuter route service. And then the fact that they already have some experience working with stakeholder groups within Lake County that we didn't realize until we read through their proposal. Like working with full circle to identify transportation needs and community outreach efforts through through a study that they're conducting with Summit County, which we didn't know was happening until we had read through their proposal. And so based on their proposal, they had a really great pulse on our community and our community's needs and regional transit problems and how to bring solutions to the table. And so that kind of sealed the deal for us when we were going through, going through the proposals. All of the proposals had staff from the consulting firms that were very well qualified to do the work. We just felt like they had the best local knowledge on Lake County transportation.
Hey, great, yeah, perfect. That sounds great.
Thanks for asking, Jeff. I do appreciate it. Um, so seeing no further discussion at this point, all those in favor, I?
I.
All right, so we will move on to number four, which is the special event permit for the borough race. We have Anne Schneider with us from Building and Land Use, who permits our special events, and I'm just going to hand it over to her.
Thank you, Kayla. So in supporting discussion with the applicant and the Boom Days Committee, there was a little bit of discussion that perhaps there may be some spectators along the county portion of the course. During the review they did with the city, they, the city application addressed having spectators at the start and finish. But through some subsequent conversations, it's come to our attention that that may be the case. And so the event would just like for us to consider that. And so I have amended, I have provided an amended permit with a third condition that I think addresses just this outstanding item and gives the event the ability to have good communication with its volunteers and organizers and planners. And so the third condition to suggested as an amended permit for Boom Days for the Borough Race is to add number three. If spectators are present on any portion of the county course, the event shall provide guidance to the public consistent with Lake County Public Health regarding outside gatherings, to include but not limited to acting for, or excuse me, asking for unvaccinated members of the public to wear face coverings. So just wanting to kind of say, you know, if it's present, then let's do standard basic practice. And that keeps, I think, everyone on the same page and keeps the city and county permits tracking together. So it just bringing forward a request to slightly amend the Borough Race Special Event Permit to address and allow for the volunteers and coordinators to have clear direction if they, if there are some spectators along the county portion.
Well, thank you, Anne. Does this require for us then to sign off on a new application for them? For the event or any, or do any of those administrative procedures for the event?
So the review process that I conduct is not a codified process. It is an administrative review process that I facilitate in the manner that I do. And so the ultimate decision on any special event is the board. So we don't have to go through any notice requirements or code requirements to revisit this particular addition to the amendment.
Wonderful. I see that we also have the applicant with us, Natalie Eddy. Do you have anything that you'd like to add, just for context at this point?
I, thanks so much, Commissioner. I think this is really helpful. We appreciate it. We mostly just wanted to make sure we had consistent guidance coming from the city and county and we're in a position to be really clear and follow through with the wishes of the county. I, I'm assuming we'll get a copy of the revised permit going forward, just to make sure that we have that, and I'll use this as guidelines in communicating with our volunteers and folks from out of town who will be also helping support the race and be volunteers along the way.
Wonderful, thank you. Anne, do we need to formally take any action on this application?
Yes, I would just need you to make a motion to to approve the amended Borough Race permit for Boom Days for August 8th. And then to Natalie's question and follow-up, as soon as, I can certainly email you the the unrecorded one, and then as soon as it goes on the record, I can get you a copy of that signed recorded permit. But I'm happy to get you one today. If you want to, in the chat, give me your email address. I will send you the unsigned copy right now, just so that you have the specific wording and guidance.
That would be great, Anne. Thank you so much. I know these are very busy times, but really appreciate the clarification. I just want to make sure that I communicate clearly. So I'll share my email with you, just as I'm I'm communicating more and more with racers on a daily basis now, so I appreciate it.
No problem.
Thanks.
All right, thank you so much, Natalie Anne. Anne, I do appreciate it. So at this time, what I'd really like to do is make it a motion to accept the amendments for the special event permit for the Borough Race.
Second.
All right, any further discussion or questions, Commissioner Feeder?
No questions, just say, yeah, it's great to just have consistency and, you know, yeah, between city and county and more clarity for the race, so it's all good.
Thank you very much. I'm seeing no further discussion. All those in favor, I?
I.
All right, thank you so much. We do appreciate it. Thank you, Natalie and Anne, for your work on that. We appreciate it. That brings us to number five, under new business, which is the resolution to authorize the offer to purchase real property from Union Pacific Railroad for the Justice Center project. And so at this time, I'm going to hand this over to Chris Floyd, our county attorney, and Katie Welter, who have been working so diligently on the Justice Center Task Force and Project. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to you guys and to listen in to what's going on and an update, and then we'll make, we'll make things happen from there.
Thanks, Commissioner Marcella. And frankly, I'm going to turn it over to Katie for most of the explanation. And if we get to the point where you're ready to adopt a resolution, we did email that over to you unfortunately this afternoon, right before the meeting. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it yet, but we will take it one step at a time. And so Katie, if you're prepared to go on and talk everybody through where we are and what the recommended steps are.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. So a little bit of background here. The county has been in negotiations for many months now with Union Pacific Railroad regarding the potential purchase of about 12 acres owned by Union Pacific located in town at the intersection of Harrison and Monroe. And the purpose of the acquisition would be for construction of a Justice Center facility on the site, a jail and courthouse and related uses. We've been negotiating in good faith that whole time, and then I believe Union Pacific Railroad has as well. However, we have kind of reached, we've kind of stalled on a certain aspect of a purchase agreement with Union Pacific. And that pertains to environmental release language. And without going into too much detail and compromising privilege around that negotiation, I would just share that in a nutshell, Union Pacific is looking for very broad release from responsibility for the well-established environmental contamination on the site. And that release language is something that the county's Environmental Council, Melanie Gramberg, finds unacceptable and, I think, atypical, given the history of the site. And that being said, you know, we're still, from my perspective, we're still very open to negotiations with Union Pacific Railroad. The book has not been closed on that. However, given that we are midway through the summer at this point, and we have diligently lined up contractors to complete due diligence on the site before snowfall, and we really felt it was important for the county to be in a strong position to either acquire the site through a purchase agreement by making an offer, a formal offer, which would be authorized through this resolution or through the use of eminent domain and which the county is expressly authorized to use in Colorado for purposes of acquiring property for a jail or courthouse facility such as this one. The, the resolution basically lays out that Chris, the county attorney, or myself would be authorized to make an offer to Union Pacific Railroad for the property. And if that offer is rejected or we receive no response within a reasonable time, it would have sort of teed up the county to initiate an eminent domain proceeding. The county's eminent domain council, Pat Wilson, has advised that that reasonable timeframe might be about 10 days. So in other words, if we don't receive a response within 10 days, the county could initiate condemnation action to take the property and would be able to take possession of the property relatively quickly in that case as well. Yeah, I think, I think that encapsulates, from my perspective, I do see that Union Pacific's representative Greg Larson is on the call, which I'm happy to see. We've had a lot of conversations over the last couple of years, and I'd like to invite Greg to weigh in if he'd like, and hopefully have characterized our negotiations fairly. Or commissioners, if you have any questions about either the resolution or just where things stand with the property.
This is Jeff Feeder. I'll say, I don't really have any questions at this point in the conversation, just to say that, you know, I feel like we've done our homework, both in terms of kind of the physical testing at the site, as well as, you know, work with, as you said, you know, both Environmental Council and eminent domain council, as well as the general work of the test force. So I mean, I feel like we've done our homework on our side. But again, both sort of on the ground and legally, so, you know, feel, feel good about the intent of the, of the resolution that you drafted.
Thank you. And I would want to, I do want to clarify one point about this resolution, which is that it does not, it requires that before any condemnation action be filed, that the board have an opportunity to approve that beforehand. And so this is not, you know, carte blanche to file a lawsuit. However, it does give the legal, it lays the legal groundwork to do so, which has to include that formal best and final offer before any kind of condemnation action would be filed. I do just want to stress that it is very much my goal and I believe Chris's goal and Melanie Gramberg's goal to close on this transaction and through a purchase agreement rather than going to court. However, given the timing and the position we're in with respect to environmental responsibility, we just feel that this is the appropriate next step.
Yeah, and I'll chime in on that to support Katie in that comment. I mean, this is, this process and the negotiations towards just to get to a point of having a purchase agreement in place has just been going on for an extraordinarily long period of time. And so, you know, it's, the concern at this point is if we can't move this board and get it under contract and get the rest of the due diligence, you know, done before the snow starts to stick, we're going to lose yet another year. And as everybody knows, and I know commissioners, you're well aware, every year that this project is delayed costs substantially more money, just because the escalating cost of materials and, you know, contractors and all of that kind of stuff, as well as financing. And so, you know, we feel it's just important, this has to move along at this point before we lose yet another year towards completing a project that we're not only, this isn't voluntary, you know, having a jail is not a voluntary aspect. So we are desperately needing to move it along to help address that serious public safety, public welfare issue in our community, as well as to make sure that we can proceed with the project in a timely manner.
Thanks, Chris and Katie. I only have one question in the end of the resolution. Katie, you said that, excuse me. If, um, it says, if, excuse me, it says if negotiations are not successful and the county hereby authorizes the county's outside special condemnation council to initiate eminent domain proceedings. So that, that's what you're referring to, that we would have to have another actionable item for us to authorize you or legal counsel to move on eminent domain proceedings. This is not the board authorizing eminent domain proceedings right now, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so this would just be the first step where we would move towards making an offer in negotiations with Union Pacific to purchase that property and acquire ownership. And then if that doesn't work, then you would come back to the board to make a determination if that, if the next step in the process seems feasible.
That's correct.
Yeah, and I would just say the intent here is essentially to make, you know, the negotiation's been going around and around. There have been, you know, offers and terms and such, negotiated and such. So at this point in time, this isn't just opening the door for negotiation. I think our goal would be to send Union Pacific our pretty much last and final offer on this contract that we've been negotiating for months and months now. So I think I want to make that clear that this isn't just to restart negotiations, this is in hopes of finalizing those negotiations.
Okay, thanks, Chris. That's what I meant. I just thought the wrong terms there. Wonderful, okay. I didn't seem to have any questions with the substance of the, of the resolution itself or the exhibit with the resolution. I would be happy to read that into the record and and go from there. Chris, do you think if I read this into the record, I need to read in the legal description of the property as well?
No, I don't think you need to go through the details because I think the resolution references the legal description, doesn't it, Katie?
Yeah.
Attached is Exhibit A. I think you just, just in reading that, you'll reference that the legal description is attached as Exhibit A.
Okay. And just read the resolution.
Yes, thank you. And I'm not, we weren't sure which number this was up to. Perhaps Ms. Berger can help us fill in that blank.
Yeah, it's Resolution 17. So I'll go ahead and read that into the record at this time. So this is Resolution number 2021-17 of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lake of the State of Colorado, authorizing an offer to purchase real property from Union Pacific Railroad for the Justice Center project. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Lake County herein after county has determined that there is a need and necessity for a new Lake County Justice Center, including facilities for the courts and the district attorney, jails and other necessary facilities specifically related there to. jails and other necessary facilities specifically related there to the project. And whereas the county is considering an effort to secure possession of and title to certain real property consisting of approximately 12 acres in Lake County, Colorado, as the potential site for the project. Said project, said property being approximately bounded by East Third Street to the north, South Toledo Street to the east, Monroe Street to the south, and Harrison Avenue and Oak Street to the west, and more fully described on the attached Exhibit A, the property. And whereas the property is believed to be owned by the Union Pacific Railroad Company, company, a Delaware corporation, which has formally abandoned the rail line that used to pass through the property, discontinued all railroad uses of and operations on the property and appears to have removed the railroad track on the property. And whereas in connection with its due diligence for the project, the county previously secured a temporary right of entry onto the property to conduct surveying, mapping, photographing, and geotechnical and environmental testing, sampling, measurement, and assessment collectively. The assessment to assist the county in determining whether the property is an appropriate site for the project and whether to go forward with a potential acquisition of the property for the project. And whereas the county completed its assessment and has determined that the property is suitable site for the project and that there are, that there is also a public need and purpose for the project. And whereas in order to complete the project, the county desires to accomplish the following. A, declare the county's intent to acquire the property for the project. B, authorize negotiations for an acquisition of the property as it may be necessary for the project. And C, authorize the project facilitator, Katie Welter or her successor, the project facilitator in consultation with the county attorney and outside special condemnation council and subject to further approvals by the county as described in Section Three herein to institute condemnation proceedings to acquire the property necessary for the project in the event that the county is unable to acquire the property voluntarily. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lake, Colorado, that Section One, the county hereby makes and adopts the determinations and findings contained in the recital set forth above. Section Two, the county hereby finds and determines that the property is an appropriate site for the project and that there is a public need and purpose for the project. The county also finds and determines that there is a need and a necessity for the county to acquire immediate possession and use of the property. Section Three, pursuant to CRS thirty dash eleven dash one oh one, thirty dash eleven one oh four, thirty dash eleven one oh seven, and/or other authorities, the county hereby authorizes the project facilitator in consultation with the county attorney and outside special condemnation council to take necessary and appropriate action to acquire the property, including good faith negoti- negotiations, acquisition, and quiet title. If such negotiations fail and upon the direction and further authorization from the board, the filing of a petition in condemnation to acquire the property through the exercise of the county's eminent domain authority. In such case, the county further authorizes the project facilitator in consultation with the county attorney and outside special condemnation council to seek and obtain immediate possession of the county, uh, property, sorry. In such case, the project facilitator and/or the county attorney or outside special condemnation council are authorized to retain on behalf of the county appraisers and other appropriate consultations, consultants and expert witnesses in connection with such efforts upon board approval of such engagements. Section Four, the project facilitator in consultation with the county attorney and outside special condemnation council is authorized to establish a reasonable amount of compensation to be offered to the owner of the property that is reflective of the fair market value of the property and to incur reasonable transactional costs and expenses associated therewith. Prior to making any such offer for the property, the project facilitator will seek authorization from the board. As appropriate and necessary, the project facilitator in consultation with the county attorney and outside special condemnation council is directed to undertake good faith negotiations with the property owners for acquisition of the property on the basis of fair and reasonable value. Negotiations may be based upon appraisal reports, market conditions, and/or other valuation information that have been approve, have been approved by the project facilitator. Upon approval by the board, the project facilitator is hereby authorized to make base, make, make finding offers for the property on behalf of the county to the owners of the property based on the reasonable market value of the property and to prepare agreements and instruments for the acquisition, quiet title, and/or possession of the property for the approval and execution by the board. Should such negotiations fail and upon direction from the board, the county's outside le, special condemnation council shall be authorized to institute eminent domain proceedings in the name of the Board of County Commissioners and to prosecute the same to completion so as to acquire possession of and good title to the property. Section Six, the county finds and determines that it is necessary, no, oops, finds that it is necessary and in the interest of the public's health, safety, and welfare for it to acquire the property as soon as possible. The county finds and determines that there is a public need and necessity for obtaining immediate access to the property. As such, the county further finds that in the event acquisition by eminent domain of the property is commenced, immediate possession is necessary for the public health, safety, and welfare. Section Seven, the project facilitator is hereby authorized to incur reasonable costs associated with acquiring the property include, without limitation, the cost of title examination, title insurance, appraisal fee, payments, and normal closing costs. Upon approval by the board, the project facilitator may incur litigation costs such as attorney fees, filing fees and charges, expert witness fees, and all other related incidental costs or expenses customarily associated with the process for quiet title acquisition and/or condemnation of the property. The project facilitator in consultation with the county attorney and outside special condemnation council is authorized to provide legal descriptions and to, to hereafter amend, adjust, or clarify the property to be acquired so that the county may acquire the interest necessary for the project. If negotiations are not successful and the county hereby authorizes county's outside special condemnation council to initiate eminent domain proceedings, council may initiate proceedings in the Lake County District Court to per, to perfect service on the purported owners of the property. By publication, if necessary, to make such deposits of compensation into the court registry as it may be ordered by the court and to take such other actions that are reasonably necessary for the county to acquire title and to immediate possession of the property adopted at this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lake, Colorado, on the second day of August, twenty twenty-one. Are there any questions on the resolution as read into the record? Commissioner Feeder, do you have any questions? Okay, um, with that, I will make a motion that we adopt Resolution twenty, that twenty-one dash seventeen, a resolution to authorize, offer to purchase real property from Union Pacific Railroad for the Justice Center project.
Uh, second?
All right. Any further discussion, Commissioner Feeder?
I don't think so. I think the discussion we had and the clarifications were all, everything I had, yeah.
Okay.
I'll say just, I mean, this is a clarification that'll come across for, you know, the, with the eminent domain stuff.
Yeah. I, I don't have any further, yeah, I don't have any further discussion or questions or comments at this time. Um, and I think my only concerns regarding eminent domain and the authorization of that process were answered already as well. So, um, seeing no further discussion, uh, Chris or Katie, do you have anything else to add at this point?
Um, I would just add that I will be sending, uh, the proposed offer to the full board for review before it's submitted to Union Pacific Railroad.
Okay. Um, yeah, go ahead, K, go ahead, Chris.
I was just saying, and I've got, I've got the, um, final draft. I, you know, a couple of typos as you were reading through that I, I corrected, that we had missed, of course. Um, so I'll send that, I'll email that over to, uh, Patty so that she'll have it for y'all's signature, um, and, and recording.
Great. Um, Chris, I'll be out tomorrow. I have to take my grandparents to Denver. Um, so if you, if you need that today, I'll be in the office this afternoon until three. Um, or can swing in first thing in the morning to get it signed, whatever is, is preferable.
I'll have it over as soon as we finish this meeting. It's ready.
Awesome. All right, so seeing no further discussion then at this point, all those in favor? I?
I.
All right. Thanks so much, uh, Katie and Chris. I really look forward to, uh, hopefully continuing to partner with, uh, Union Pacific and, and making this, uh, um, forward, make, have our project move forward. Um, so thank you so much for the work you put in on that.
And thank y'all for the support, too. Uh, you know, we, we really appreciate it and appreciate the opportunity. And thanks to Katie, too, for doing such a good job of continuing to shepherd this, this, uh, somewhat wayward sheep forward here. So, uh, we'll get it done.
Thank you so much. Um, with that, then, um, I believe the, the only thing, we don't have any minutes. Okay, the only thing, uh, that we have next is bills and payroll. So I will make a motion that we approve bills and payroll for pay period ending July thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Second?
All right, any further discussion?
None for me.
All right, none for me. So with that, all those in favor? I?
I.
All right. Um, does anybody with us today have any additional public comments that they'd like to make on items not on the agenda? I don't see any additional members of the public with us right now at this point. All right, and so with that, we will adjourn today at one forty-two. Oh, unless, do you have anything else to add, Commissioner Feeder?
Uh, nope, nope.
All right, wonderful. So with that, then we'll adjourn today at one forty-three PM. Thank you all for joining us and have a wonderful afternoon.